Greatly lost the phone.
Are you all set?
Mm-hmm.
That's game on.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Start the pledge of allegiance.
The exact description.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me for a moment of silence for two longtime employees of the district, Edith Faucher and Debbie Elwood that have just recently passed away. All right, we have the approval of the minutes from our February 26 meeting. Do we have a motion?
I move second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And the approval of minutes from our March 6 meeting. Do we have a motion? Approve them as submitted?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are up to approval of the CSE and CPSC recommendations. Does anybody have any questions on those? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve them.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment. Do we have anybody from the audience that would like a public comment? Or do we have... Sandy, are you here for...
Library.
The library? Okay, we have a special spot for you for presentations.
We aren't getting over that, do you think?
Is there anybody else?
No.
Do we have government students here? Would you like to introduce yourself? Not that you would like to, but would you?
Nate Clamroth. Ben Condon.
All right, wonderful. Okay. We have new faculty.
We have new faculty. Mark?
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to introduce our new biology teacher, Mr. Nate Cuddy. And his very able mentor, this is Lamerow, everybody knows. Interestingly enough today, Nate had his first observation by me, and it was so great experience for me to discover how much I had forgotten about cell biology over the years. I would say he's a keeper, folks, just so you know. Go ahead.
Nate Cuddy to us from Gilbertsville, Mount Upton. He graduated from Afton High School. He got his bachelor's at SUNY ESF and his master's at Binghamton University.
Glad to meet everyone, finally. Everything's been going great thus far. Very excited to be here. My fiancee is also a teacher. Just a little more about me. She's an earth science teacher at South Corrtate. We currently still live in Gilbertsville, but just in a couple of weeks, we're going to be moving to Delhi. So, very excited to get over here, get closer.
Nice. Well, welcome.
Left-handed or right-handed?
Right-handed.
All right. There's a few of those from ESF that are right-handed. Most are left.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're up to number four, possible discussion items. Budget newsletter.
So, we would like to put together a budget newsletter, maybe a little different from the, for lack of a better term, I'm going to call it the basic paper format that's been used in the past. We'd like to do something that has a little bit of glossier cover and some pictures of students, and then in the center of that have the budget offering for the coming year. The price differential is not that great, and I worry sometimes that people see the regular newspaper one and maybe don't get a good look at it. And I'd like to have a shot at trying something a little bit more attractive to the eye to see if folks would, you know, really take a moment to read it. So, if that's okay with the board, then we would have to have all of our items and data all ready by the 25th of April, which shouldn't be an issue for us in terms of our timeline. And given, of course, that there's a state budget, you know, that sort of thing, but I mean, things that were, that are within our control, we would like to be able to put that together with your permission.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody have any objections to that? All right, good. Okay, the facilities committee meeting will be meeting tonight after the board, and then finance committee meeting after the April 2 meeting. Our April 18 special meeting has been changed to Wednesday, April 24. That is to vote on the DCMO BOSI's administrative budget. That will be... Did we ever get a quorum for the time, noon or five?
No, we need to decide noon or five.
Okay. April 24.
That's the Wednesday, the day following our regular meeting.
All right, so I already have it on my schedule for noon, did it?
I won't be able to do noon.
Okay. Do we have a quorum for noon?
Marilyn can't make it either.
Oh, that's right, Marilyn will be here.
Yeah, I will be here.
I can probably make it.
Okay, do you want to switch it until 5:00? I just wrote in, must be to carry it over from the other. Will more people be able to make it at 5:00, or...
It's literally a 10-minute meeting.
Either one would be whatever works for you.
Does it make a difference between 5:00 and 7:00?
If I get there, I could get there at 5:00, I couldn't get there at 7:00.
I can definitely do 5:00 if that's good with everybody else.
So, you want us, we'll do 5:00? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, 5:00 for that one. Okay, and then the other one that we really need to come up with a date is the superintendent search process with Tim Creamer. He gave dates from May 6 to May 30, and this is going to be a five, or two-hour, two-hour session. The only thing that I don't think will work well is the May 7. And Corey, you had made a note of that. That's our budget hearing and regular meeting.
Right.
I think it would just be too much trying to get that done. So, I don't know if... I don't think I have any conflicts with those... Oh, I do. The 6th, I cannot do. Or the 8th.
Should we do what we usually do, have Corey send it out? People say when they aren't available, and then kind of back into a date from there.
Okay, you want to check with work? Yes, sure.
I'll need dates this week, though.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
And we also need to set our policy meeting.
I know.
We're down to the 27th, or April 1st or 3rd. You can let me know on that.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Okay, I'll get back to you tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right. We are up to five correspondents. Let's see, we have the DCMO BOSI's annual meeting, Wednesday, April 3. And then we also have a Workers' Compensation Alliance meeting, Friday, April 5.
I won't be able to go to that. Anybody else that's interested? Talk to Corey and get a car and go to it.
Friday, April 5.
Mr. Thomas is not able to go either that night.
Okay. I can probably attend that if somebody else wants to.
I can't do that.
Attend?
I might be able to.
Okay. All right, and that was Front Street, Binghamton, right? Okay. All right, we are up to number six, presentations. William B. Ogden Free Library.
Hello, I'm Sandy Gregory. I'm the current treasurer of the library. This is my first opportunity to be here in that capacity. And you're used to this probably, but the Board of Trustees of the William B. Ogden Free Library is requesting that the school board include the library on the ballot at budget voting time, which is May 21, 2019. The library is requesting a 1.5% increase in taxes to be collected by the school district and distributed to the library in a timely manner. So, the total taxes collected for 2020 would then amount to $123,916 for an increase of $1,831. Thank you.
Thank you. That is a lot of work the library is doing right now.
Project looks nice.
Yeah.
Even despite the bad weather.
Yeah.
You guys are managing that well.
No, thanks. I may, I can tell you guys a little bit about it. It won't take long. It's a... We're in the fifth year of our five-year project. Seventy-five percent of the money that we're spending there comes from the New York State Library Construction Fund, and the library contributes the balance of 25%. This is the fifth year. Once we get the roof done, our next project is windows and doors, and then, gladly for me, since I've been working on this thing for five years, that'll be the end of our exterior renovations. At that time, we'll have spent somewhere between $700,000 and $800,000, 75% of which came from the library fund.
Wow.
And just as an aside, the reason we worked through the winter is the dormitory authority approves applications, and this year, normally they approve it in May or June, and this year, they approved it in September.
That's great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too. Bye, you.
Do we need a motion on that? Okay. Do we have additions to the agenda?
We have one addition. It's actually tied to the athletic recommendations. So, it'll be number 9H.1, part of the consent agenda. We've had a request from Crystal Wood to rescind her appointment as an assistant track coach, and she prefers to be appointed as a volunteer track assistant.
Okay. All right, so our consent agenda, we have the financial reports. We have the Declared Teacher Appreciation Day, that will be May 7 this year, and Declared School Nurse Appreciation Day, which will be May 8. The appointment of election inspectors and assistant clerks for the budget vote on May We have resignation of Kristen Potter. And then we have appointments of the 6th through 12th Special Education Department Chair, Sarah Nagy Leishner. And then we have freshman advisor Eric Schofield, substitute teacher aide Erin Talbot, and substitute school monitor Erin Talbot. And then we have the high school musical orchestra, Janelle Goldman, Laura Wahlberg, Rebecca Doig, Caleb Bartlett, Robert McLaughlin, Cora Ben Kinley, David DeCiro, Karen Ball, Kristen McGinn, and Michelle Reed. And then we have the athletic recommendations. And that's it. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Number 9, under new business, we have a lot of donations that were made. I believe this is over $14,000 worth of donations. So, I will, I think it's important to read each and every one of these, that they're taking the time and to make such generous donations to the school district. And I really apologize right now if I mess up anybody's name, if I skip over something. But, "To the Walton Football Field Hockey Programs in Memory of Kathy Hoover, $100 from Mary Beth Chandler, $30 from Mr. and Mrs. Oliver Fassler. To the Walton Football Program in Memory of Kathy Hoover, $150 from David McGibben, $100 from Mr. and Mrs. Mark Lammerow, $25 from Mr. and Mrs. Joseph Rizzo, $200 from Mr. and Mrs. Eleanor Dvor, $20 from Sandra Wells, $50 from Mr. and Mrs. Gerald Pearson, $50 from Mr. and Mrs. Gordon Daniels, $100 from Carol Sernukel, I believe, $25 from Mr. and Mrs. Dominic Malazo, $50 from Helen...
Dokasak.
What is it?
Dokasak.
Dokasak? $200 from Mr. and Mrs. Robert Briggs, $50 from Deborah Laurent, $25 from Mr. and Mrs. John Ford, $50 from Mr. and Mrs. Gordon Fletcher, $25 from Mr. and Mrs. Timothy Kapatrik, $100 from Delaware Sports Center, $75 from Mr. and Mrs. Renwick Russell, $50 from Leslie Moké, $100 from Mr. and Mrs. Glenn Hoover, $10 from Nancy Green. "To the Walton Field Hockey Program in Memory of Kathy Hoover, $50 from Mr. and Mrs. Richard Henrich, $200 from Joshua Dvor, $20 from Sandra Wells, $100 from Carol Sernukel, $25 from Mr. and Mrs. Dominic Malazo, $50 from Helen Dorcheck, I messed that one up, $200 from Mr. and Mrs. Robert Briggs, $50 from Mr. and Mrs. Tim, or, I'm sorry, Tom Briggs, $50 from Mr. and Mrs. Michael Pano, $50 from Deborah Laurent, $25 from Mr. and Mrs. Timothy Kapatrik, $50 from Mr. and Mrs. Gordon Daniels, $100 from the Clark family, $75 from Mr. and Mrs. Renwick Russell, $100 from Mr. and Mrs. Mark Lammerow, $50 from Mr. and Mrs. David Day, $100 from Mr. and Mrs. Glenn Hoover. "To the Walton Central School Library System in Memory of Kathy Hoover, $50 from Mr. and Mrs. Christopher Gronski, $10 from Sandra Wells, $25 from Mary Koval, $200 from Mr. and Mrs. Robert Briggs, $30 from Mr. and Mrs. Glenn Palmeroy, $50 from Deborah Laurent, $150 from Mr. and Mrs. Ronald Coulson, $100 from Deborah Hagerty, $25 from Mr. and Mrs. Timothy Kapatrik, $25 from Mr. and Mrs. Frances Carpenter, $100 from Mr. and Mrs. Glenn Hoover, $10 from Nancy Green. "To the Walton Central School District in Memory of Kathy Hoover, $50 from Mr. and Mrs. Butch Neal. "To the varsity football team in memory of Kathy Hoover, $50 from Mr. and Mrs. Joseph Condon. "To the high school library in memory of Kathy Hoover, $30 from Mr. and Mrs. Glenn Palmeroy, $30 from Mr. and Mrs. John Tennant to the Townsend Elementary School in memory of Carl Whitaker, $50 from Mr. and Mrs. Mark McGibbin to the Walton Central School Class of 1979 Graduate Scholarship, $500 from Jeff Held to Walton Central School Class of 1979 Graduation Scholarship, $50 from Brian Sullivan to the Walton Central School Class of 1979 Graduation Scholarship, $100 from Kim Adams to the Walton Central School Class of 1979 Graduation Scholarship, $10,000 from an anonymous donor to the Mr. Douglas Bartlett Scholarship That is amazing. Very much appreciated. And so, do we have a motion to accept those donations?
Make it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. All right. Nomination, or nominate committee to the DCMO BOSI's Board of Education. Now, this is kind of a discussion item. Do we have anyone that we want to nominate, or do we want to just nominate the individuals that are seeking their term again? That is, I'm trying to look for those names real quick here.
First three.
Linda Deandra, Franklin School District, David, oh goodness.
Cruikshank.
Cruikshank, South Assealec, and John Klukowski, Norwich. Those three terms expire 2019.
We know they're rerunning?
Um...
Don't know for sure. It's Linda Deandrea is rerunning.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't specify in the letter that we received.
I'd support them if we know they're running, that's all.
Oh, it does say in one vacant board member's seat.
Right.
So, it sounds like Linda Deandrea would not be running. Now, we don't, we don't have to make a nomination. This'll come back through. Whoever is nominated would get a seat.
Just like last year, we didn't put it in, and then...
Right.
We kept the ballot for those who were selected and put forth by other boards.
Yep.
So, absent a candidate...
We're not going to have a meeting prior to that, or will we? To just do quick research and see if the two...
No. The nominations are due this week.
Would it be on a turn, Madam President, if I spoke to Mr. Cruikshank?
No.
I know Dave Cruikshank personally. He was the board president at South Assealec when I was there. The last time I spoke to Dave, I know that he was intending to run, and he was an excellent board member, and I'm sure he, and I know that he has a great deal of care for the BOSI's program. So, I mean, I can speak personally about him. The other individual, I can't.
Might better just wait and see what everybody else comes up with and cast their vote down.
Okay. So, we will table that, and then, once the nominations come back, then we will have a vote on that.
Right, and that vote is on April 24.
All right, now, we are up to 9C, the approval of the resolution providing for the holding of the annual meeting. Along with this, the annual meeting, the budget vote, May 21. Then we have the propositions, which would be Proposition 1, the 2019-20 budget. Proposition 2 would be a capital reserve fund. And Proposition number 3 would be the 365-passenger buses.
For the bus lease.
Yep, for the bus lease. Now, Proposition number 2, the capital reserve fund. We had spoke about this, and the construction phase is, from what I understand, is in two phases. Phase 1, or actually, yeah, phase 1, are we calling that phase 1? Or is it just...
Construction, no.
There's two priorities.
Okay, two priorities.
So, coming out of the, coming out of the facilities committee, from coming out of the facilities committee, we've, we've been meeting for well over a year now, trying to come up with projects, very critical projects, things like, some of your roof warranties are out, and we have leaks in the roofs that need patching. Everybody realizes when they drive in here what the parking lots look like. We get a lot of talking about that. Those are all capital projects. Anytime we exceed $100,000 of expenditures on the actual capital or the buildings themselves, you need voter approval. The district has not had a established reserve fund to be able to offset the local cost of the taxpayers to bring a capital project to fruition. So, our, currently, we're at 82-point-some percent with state aid in the district, so that you have to make up that difference by local sources in order to have a capital project. They're only going to fund approximately 82% of it.
Last time, I thought it was 82.8%, I think is what it was. I mean, there could shift in this year, but...
1082, 83.
So, what we're, what we really want to do is, in order to get a capital project moving forward, it'll take, sometimes it takes years to move forward. We want to be able to establish a reserve fund in order to save money anywhere we can to offset any kind of tax increase that would be a shock to a capital project. Very, most of your schools do this. Delhi just did it with their capital projects. And basically, what you're trying to do, in Tim's words, is smooth out your budget over time, even if you have a big capital project that potentially would come in. So, we're going to go to the voters and ask, we're going to talk about how much do we want to try to set it up for? The important thing that everybody needs to know about a capital reserve fund is, you need voter approval to establish the fund. There's a set amount you can put in the fund, and to take any dollar out of the fund also needs approval by the voters. So, that's why it's set up for capital. So, it's not like you can have a capital fund sitting there that you can use for buses or anything like that. They are, it is established for a purpose, and the voters would have approval before any dime can come back out of that. So, I think it's, it's good, it's overdue. It's something that we need to look at, because we know there are infrastructure around us, we have major priorities. Our priority 1 projects, I don't have the numbers exactly in front of me, but what you're speaking of initially was our priority 1 and priority 2 projects. Priority 1 projects would be your roofs, your parking lots, things of that nature. Priority 2 are some of the windows, doors, and things of that nature, so...
And great, and those are all based upon the building condition survey that the architects actually came in and did a, a check on all of the life of all of our pieces, all of our roofs and that sort of thing.
And they took them all to the four priorities. So, you know, the top two, we figured were, that's a, that's a big enough chunk to start saving for, for a capital project. So, that's kind of where we backed everything down and took a real hard look with the architects and said, we want to try to move forward with possibly ones and twos as priorities within the near future, within the next few years.
And this capital reserve savings account, the funds, the source of the funds would be obtained, you know, from incentive aids, not appropriate fund balances from the general fund, and then, from time to time, state aid related to the fund. After Larry had spoke with SCOP, an amount of $8 million came up, and that would be over a 10-year period. So, our goal was to establish an $8 million reserve fund. We may not get to that, but as funds allow to put into that account, we could go up to that amount in 10 years' time.
It doesn't obligate you to get to that point or anything else. It basically says, this is as much as you'll ever be able to put into this account. And I was going to check back through lawyers, things like that, to make sure that if we get outside grants and things of that nature, that also potentially would go into that fund and be pulled out later with voter approval as well. I think that's the mechanism you'd need to even be able to secure outside funding even without tapping into the local tax base. So, very important, but I think a lot of people are going to have questions on, what exactly is this, and what does it mean in the future? But if you set an $8 million threshold on this, that's about $45 million worth of projects. If you use our state aid, if the $8 million is our local cost share, that's about $44 to $45 million in projects, which is a big number. But when we started going down through and looking what the schools have done around this and what school projects cost, it's shocking, to say the least. I think our priority ones and twos are around the $22 million mark. So, at that point, you know, if you had a capital reserve project and nobody, you can establish a couple of these, or you can do it in one lump sum, would be the, would be the consideration. But I think your priority ones and twos, you'd need to be 2.8 to 4.5 in a reserve to be able to net out no taxes implications moving forward.
To the taxpayer.
So, everybody needs to understand, if they see an $8 million number, that doesn't mean we have $8 million we're going to put into this account. It means you, as a vote... It means you, as the voters, are saying, this is as much as you're going to put in this over a 10-year period, and you can't, you can't exceed that. And you especially, everybody has to understand, you need voter approval for any dime coming out of that, that fund, is, is the important thing that people need to understand. It's a savings plan to offset the taxes.
So I think that's, that was one of the things that we had to make sure, that the $8 million limit, and then for the term of 10 years. Is everybody in agreement with that?
And then the thing is, Ed, Eddie, go ahead.
Just to interject one thing. The $8 million is total deposits.
Right.
So it's not a 8 million dollars and you can put a little in, take a little out, you can keep continuing until you get to 8 million. It's a total of 10 years, the maximum amount of deposit in there is 8 million dollars. So if you put 3 million in, take 2 million out, you still, when we have 5 million you can put in there, it doesn't keep growing.
That's what I was going to do. That account balance, despite the fact we have an 8 million dollar cap, that, that balance, because we're going to be using monies that go in, will never be 8 million dollars. The contributions will be 8 million dollars, but we have to take that out to reflect our portion of that shared expense, so.
But the important thing everybody really needs to know is, any dime that comes out of that has to be voter.
Voter approved.
That's, that's how that works. So, that's a good clarification, Tim, thank you. The 8 million dollars is totally your deposits.
Right. You're actually setting up two votes, not now, but I mean, eventually, there's two votes. There's one to set up the account, that's what you're talking about right now.
Yes.
But then, you can't touch anything until another vote occurs and a capital project is approved.
Right.
All right.
So I think it's, it's time that we started looking to save because our infrastructure needs it.
Right.
And the last thing I think you need to do is shock the taxpayers with a capital project and put it out there and say, you need to foot our cost share of that.
Right.
This, this is basically just a savings account to be able to take that shock out of it.
Correct. So with the, the Facilities Committee, they're in agreement that 8 million with a 10-year term? Okay. So Proposition 1, Proposition 2, and then the Proposition 3, and then, of course, we have the board member positions, the three-year terms, presently held by Kevin Charles, Marilyn Lewis, and Harold Neal Jr. All right. Do we have a motion to accept?
I just have to update it, 8 million over 10 years?
Correct. And what's our aid on transportation? Is that still 80 some percent as well?
I want to say somewhere around 65%. 80, we're at 83, 82, 83% for the capital project and the transportation aid is more than 60.
60s, okay.
65 is resonating with me too, Tim, so I, we're close.
Okay.
So I have 8 million dollars over a term of 10 years?
Correct. All right, do we have a motion to approve that?
I'll make it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. All right. We are up to number 10, the policy first reading. Paul, would you like to do those honors again?
Sure. I got them, don't you worry. Did I go in? No. Right here. Come on. All right. Policy 2000, Board Operation Goals. 2100, School Board Legal Status. 2110, School Board Powers and Duties. 2120, School Board Elections. 2120.1, Candidates and Campaigning. 2120.2, Voting Procedures. 2121, Board Member Qualifications. 2150, Board Member Vacancies. 2160, Code of Ethics for All District Employees. 2175, Defense and Indemnification of Public Officers and Employees. 2210, Board Organizational Meeting. 2220, Board Officers. 2250, Board Committees. 2260, Citizens Advisory Committee. 2270, School Attorney. 2310, Regular Meetings. 2320, Special Meetings. 2330, Executive Session. 2340, Notice of Meetings. 2342, Agenda Preparation and Dissemination. 2350, Board Meeting Procedures. 2351, Quorum. 2352, Rules of Order. 2360, Minutes. 2382, Broadcasting and Taping of Board Meetings. 2410, Policy Development, Adoption, Implementation, and Review. 2510, New Board Member Orientation. 2520, Board Member Training. 2521, School Board Conferences. 2710, Communication Among Individual Board Members. 3000, Goals and Objectives for Administration. 3100, Superintendent of Schools. 3120, Duty of the Superintendent.
All right, so this, the first reading adheres to the 25-day public comment period. And then, once again, the policies will be adopted with a projection completion date of January 1st, 2020. So do we have a motion to accept that? These policies?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. That was a lot of reading, I'm going to tell you.
This is better than the last one.
That was a lot of reading. All right, we are up to number 11, Administrative Remarks.
I have my crack administrative team here tonight. Can speak to you about their latest developments. Should we start with Jane this time around?
Well, I'm pleased to announce that the elementary teachers have been working hard and decided this year to do a book review. And the book that they chose and have just completed is called Purpose of Play. And it comes from a meeting that the elementary teachers and I attended in Albany last summer. And it revolved around the importance of play, but developmentally appropriate practices in play now that the very young levels came through too. And they were so enthusiastic that they've now chosen another book. So we're going to set off, and the books came off, came in this morning. So we're going to look at mind in the making and how, how children learn and can be, you know, the curiosity developed from a very, very early age. So they did a really nice job with that. I've got two teams currently doing the SRSD, which is Self-Regulation Strategy Development Writing Project. They are well into their, their project and they are developing their grade 5 and grade 6 teachers, one from the middle school, one from the elementary school, two teams. And they come, we do webinars with Buffalo State University and Teresa Janzak, who is the leader of the RTI Network for New York State. So they're doing really well. And what was very pleasing the other day was to have a special education teacher, just, she, she came to the meeting so enthusiastic. She said, "I couldn't believe that grade 5 children could work this hard, think this deeply about writing," and was so enthusiastic and couldn't wait to start putting pen to paper. They've read two articles, two opposing articles about the crisis with climate change and how scientists have decided to breed insects for eating. And the children, usually, you know, it's going to be, it really kind of reflects Walton and the, the culture that we have because the children decided that that wasn't a good idea because some of them came from beef farming families and truly wondered what would happen then to their, their family. The implications were kind of not what the article was promoting. And then, as a, as a reward for doing so well, last week or two weeks ago now, I think, the teachers brought them some edible insects that were 5th graders running up and down the hallways going, "I can see the caterpillar." Just to give them a taste. So it, it's really, it's really very, very nice to see them working so hard and eliciting such thought, such deep thought from the 5th grader. So that's, that's really doing them a great service. I've asked the SRSD teams to turnkey that training in the summer, when we do our summer professional development. So that amongst our NTFS team, that's the district team, we finally, a preliminary team from all three schools got together and we selected a universal screener to be used, K through 12. So now we can get going with the district team, followed by building level teams that then can start putting this system into place, start developing the systems to write through. So that's good news, that'll be a process, and I'm very, very pleased at how it's going. And apart from that, a little bit of kind of down news was that we did get dinged a little bit for our participation rate, as predicted. The elementary school got a, kind of a, what was it called? A potential participation rate improvement plan. So that means that eventually, if things don't improve, then we'll have to write a plan. But the middle school was okay, the, the middle school had improved their participation rate just enough to, to put them into good standing. So, so we just have to really watch and, and make a good effort for that this year and make sure that goes up and then we'll be fine.
All right, good.
I had another milestone moment here in Walton recently. I had an opportunity to see what, what I used to think of as the first sign of spring and the end of the school year. I had the opportunity of Puerto Ricans exams again. I haven't done that in a long time. It was an interesting experience because signing into the state end department was a lot different than it was 38 years ago. Tomorrow, Mr. Jackson and Mrs. Pierce and I are going to do a little survey of the property up beyond the tennis court, take a look at how we're going to configure the barn for the new, the new barn for the ag program and see about putting together some resources to, to get that in a little bit better configuration for next year. I've been consistently working on evaluations of staff, we all have to that matter, and that seems to be going pretty well. I already shared with you, I was a little humiliated by my lack of biology knowledge earlier, so. But it's going well and things are progressing, so.
Now, to go back to the barn, is that something that we can get grants for, or have we received grants?
It is a grant.
It is, okay.
It's being constructed by the, Mr.
Salvia, is it?
Yeah, his class. And we're going to be talking about it, but it looks like the construction date is going to be finished in the ballpark at the middle of June. So that's where we're going to coordinate the movement of the barn out of the building and up into its site. Like, we're going to get what, where we want to play, what kind of site prep, we're going to deal with, those sorts of things. We're going to run fencing.
Nice.
Little deja vu, my view.
You know, I've been out, so I've just been back for a week, so I don't know a lot that, but we're just getting back into the swing of things.
Welcome back.
Next meeting, I'll have more to say.
All right.
Hold your to that. We had a PT, the PTA sponsored a semi-formal for our middle school students beginning of March. Despite some of my worries and concerns ahead of time, it went off without a hitch. There was a, a great turnout. We had a six or seven teachers volunteer to chaperone along with a few PTA members and myself. And the kids really enjoyed it, so it's something we'll probably look to do, do in the future. I believe the, the middle school and high school PTA made about $500 on it, so it was useful in that manner as well. Last week, the math department did our annual pie celebration. So the, the kids really liked that and I enjoyed it a lot myself also. There's a pie eating contest and the kids are entered in a drawing to see who gets to go based on the number of canned goods they bring in for the food bank. So the more canned goods they bring in, the more entries they have in the, in the drawing to be the pie eater. I think a, I think a 7th grader won it this year.
Was that Kobe?
He was pumped. They also had a, a memorization contest that you could memorize pie for the most digits, and I believe it was 93 digits past the decimal point, which is a lot better than the three I can do. They also had a, a piathlon, so they had a couple different kind of fun events and it was actually kind of like a relay race type thing. The kids really get into it and really had a good time. The math department does a great job putting it together. Like Mr. Duper said, we've been doing a lot of observations. Going out to the elementary school makes me realize that I kind of miss that age, even though I love the middle school age. You know, I started my teaching career in an elementary school, so I see a lot of really neat things in, in the elementary school going on and it's neat to see those things. It's, it's good to get in the classrooms and really see the educational, fun things our teachers are doing. You know, it's a perfect example, like Jane was saying, with the eating of the bugs. I didn't see any bugs being eaten, but the kids were, were learning and seemed to be enjoying learning, which is, which is important.
I'm the one with the steak on that one, too.
Where do you find USDA approved bugs to eat?
They were all emptying them out, they were all washing the mouths out of the water fountain, great online, I think.
I can imagine.
So while Mike was out, we did a little bit of a rotation with some of the staff. Some of the administrative team went down, spent some time with the, at the elementary so that they didn't feel like they were totally alone in the world. And if something came up, we had someone accountable to them. So that's a little bit of what Adam's talking about, Jane was down there. I can't remember if already went down, did already go down too? Okay, so all three of them took a turn and, and as far as I know, it worked out okay.
He was still standing when he came back. Well, I was emailing Patty and talking to her on the phone and stuff like that. They were running stuff.
Nice date.
Adam reminds me that tomorrow I'm going down actually to the math lab because it's math madness time. And so I'm going to be part of the challenge down there. I don't know which grade I'm going to be working with. Last time I threw my numbers in for the 4th grade and didn't do too well, but. But, we'll see about this time, but that'll be a lot of fun doing that. Lately, I've been working a lot with, my head has been a lot at negotiations and also we did get some notification that our health insurance program, New York 44, is looking at some substantial increases that we're not really pleased with. And Tim and I and Chris Wilkinson, our labor relations person, I've had conversations with all of the labor units and we're taking a look at, to see what our options are. And I'm certainly not free to talk about what those are because we don't have anything yet. This is pretty fair, fairly new. But I, but we are being aggressive and trying to, to look at, see what, what some of our options are with respect to health insurance or health insurance alternatives as they might come forward, come to us. I did have a meeting last week with the chairs at the, from the elementary, up in this room. And I asked for them to come together to give me their reactions on the professional development that's gone on over the past year. And their thoughts about what kind of professional development we might plan and think about for the coming year. I know it's March, but we really need to be thinking about those things going forward. We have some training, some specialized training that has, last year and this year will be occurring during the summer. We have some, there'll be some super tennis conference days and some training going on, that sort of thing. So it's, it's good for us to be thinking about that. And I had mentioned to the board that we talked about actually having a retreat with the totally new administrative team over the summer as well. So we've been, we've been working on some of those pieces. But anyway, the meeting with the elementary teachers' chairs went, I thought, went very well. the elementary teachers' chairs went, I thought, went very well. They gave me some reactions, but more importantly, they gave me some thoughts about going forward and the way, some of the things that they'd like to see going forward, and I found that very interesting, and I'm going to be having some conversations with all the administrative team about that when we have our administrative meeting, which I believe is this Friday. And I'm also going to replicate that meeting with the chairs at high school as well. Probably that won't be until next week, though. So, but we'll be doing some more of the same and, you know, trying to move forward as far as professional development goes as a unit. The, we are in the interview process for a high school principal, first round interviews, taking a look at paperwork, taking a look at references, and doing some interviews of folks, initial interviews. We're not done, so it wouldn't be good for me to say one thing or another about anybody, but we're not done with that process. We're still inside that process, but it is going well. We've had a number of, it's a pretty good-sized pool. It's a pool that I'm pleased with. And I'm certainly happy to give you more information when we come to an end on it and that sort of thing. But I would remind the board that, and those folks who are sitting on committees, interview committees, that the training for those committees is on schedule for April 3rd and/or 4th. People don't have to attend both, but just one of those sessions. And it's really important to be part of that training because, and it's important to be, if you're going to be a part of the committee that's going to be doing some interviewing, then it's important to be, plan on being at all of those because it's, you can't compare finalist candidates unless you've seen all of them.
Right.
Plain and simple. And so I just at large encourage anybody who's part of those committees, and certainly the board as a committee, that to participate in the training and to, and to remember that our finalist interviews are scheduled for the week of the 22nd of April. And my vision for that anyway, and I'm certainly happy to talk with you folks about that, too, is that, but my thought about that is we have one person in each day as a finalist, so, because they would be going through a number of interviews. But we can talk about the format of that. Yeah, we've got a little bit more time on that as well. Marilyn and Rhonda and I went to the Bosse's National Technical Honor Society last week, and that was, that was a nice event. And I actually think there was a gentleman with the last name of Cutting there.
Yep.
Who received an award. So that was, that was a very nice event.
I was amazed by how many students of that age really have it together, what they have accomplished so far, just in high school, and what their goals are after high school was just amazing. One of the students that stands out with me, that might have been the Cutting, the one that has his own business. He started out as cutting wood on the side for people.
I think he was a Sydney boy. I think that was a Sydney boy.
Okay, so he has his own logging or log business where he's cutting lumber for, or wood for people, and now he has just bought this machine, and I know, I think, Booners down there, I think they might have one where you put the log, a processor, there you go. You put this log on it and it cuts it all up and puts it, splits the wood and everything right in this one whole unit. And he bought it himself with this, so, I mean.
And it's paid for.
Yeah, and it's paid for. There was just so much, but we had, what, five, five or six kids that were inducted?
I think it was eight, actually. I think we had eight.
So I haven't seen it on the website yet, but, you know, PJ might be putting that up there yet, but I was just amazed with how many and, you know, what our students are doing and some of the struggles that they have had to get there and, you know, how well they're doing now. But it was a good evening. It really was. They did a nice job.
It very much reminded me of if you, if you never had the opportunity, but if you ever do get the opportunity, I really encourage you to stop by if they're running their Skills USA competitions sometimes. Those are amazing events, and they do a state competition, I think it's up in Syracuse, usually on the fairgrounds in Syracuse. But quite literally, the students who, just by way of example, if they've been training in HVAC, there are panels that are set up in this room, and they all look the same basically. And the students come in, and they cannot go near the panels or anything. They stand back of a line, and then once they're admitted, they go in, and each one of them is given a sheet. And basically, the sheet says, "Okay, you've got 10 minutes to read this," and then you, and then, and then you're on for the next half hour, 45 minutes, hour, whatever the, it is. And there's a judge there who watches them do what they do as they get, as they get ready. It's amazing. You'd love it. It's amazing to watch what they do, and it's just about any technical field that you can think of because other Bosse's around the state have, you know, some of them have aeronautics, some of them have HVAC, as I say, electronics, and, you know, just everything under the sun that you can think of. But it's amazing to watch that event. I really highly recommend that if you ever get a chance, if you have a day to go up and watch that, it's, it would bring tears to your eyes watching those.
The Skills USA in Syracuse, my son had attended that, and Mr. Snyder and I had talked about this a couple of years ago, I think it was, where some Bosse's, their children go for four years. And to be in competition with some of these other schools, you know, and, I mean, they were just taking the awards and the award, you know, first place, first place, some of these other Bosse's, but they are, they are going to come out and work in the workforce, and they are going to be top-notch. They really are. But it was, it was amazing.
I started out in Bosse's, too, so that's, you can go a long way.
Yeah.
There's a lot of opportunities. You do meet a lot of people. Got kids from every school around and really good friends. I haven't seen a lot of them in years, but we all got along really good, had a good time.
Yep.
It's definitely a good thing.
It is.
Lot, lot to be said for that.
Culinary program is judged by professional chefs. Some of them come up from the city, some of them come from other places. It's just amazing to watch it happen. That's it for me, except that I would like a brief, very brief executive session, and nobody here, just me.
Okay, and this is executive session for purpose of?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do we need a budget?
Not going to beg to jump up, but.
Oh, we have budget. Tim is going to.
Tim's going to talk about budget.
Okay.
Okay. That's.
Since I was starting, you don't want to shout out the owner.
Well, you're hiding in the corner.
I got in late.
Wearing all black in a black chair.
Yeah.
Dark recessed.
Out of the camera view.
Everybody at home is wondering, who's that talking about all that stuff?
Who's that man behind the curtain?
So just real quick on the budget, I'm still working our way through all of the salary stuff, having to do the changes to the current year, and then the retro and everything else before we can actually project out what next year will be. Has proven to be a lot of work. Obviously, has shouldered a lot of that work in terms of getting all that stuff together. And we also, in the Westwood contract, did a, something we haven't done before, which is cents per hour, which sounds relatively simple, except that for many, many years, it's been on an annual basis, and so trying to break that down into cents per hour has been a little more difficult because we don't usually quote people's salary by hourly wage. We quote it by annual amount, so that it's number of hours per day, days per year. So it's proven to be a little more difficult, and I need that in order to be able to project because the first year of cents per hour would be 1920, so I can't project that until I'm down to that. So we're still working on that, and also, the reason spending all the time, obviously, it's just about 40% of the budget, so once I get that together, and then, you know, the fringe benefits fall into place, that's another close to 30%. And then they just opened up the Bosse's final service requests, and, you know, been spending a lot of time trying to get the detail of that, not only the co-serves and having them all in the budget, but, you know, Rick and I have kind of spent some time in pulling apart the co-serves so that we can identify what is in each side, each one of those line items as well, so that we can keep track of that stuff. So it's kind of where we are at this point, and once we get those, just those three items alone are about 85% of the budget, so that's kind of what's taken us the most amount of time. So that's kind of where I'm at at this point. I expect that once I get those things together, I will send out some detailed information to the finance committee for them to look over those detailed pieces, and they'll have the opportunity to do that, and hopefully get together potentially a little bit before the April 2nd meeting, but, you know, that depends on how quickly things go. But I want to give you the information so you can at least pour over it and enjoy it as much as I have, so.
I just wanted to give an update on negotiations, is what I wanted to.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
But I'd like Tim to stay for that also, if you don't mind.
So that was nearly.
That's what you get for having, for being late. That's right.
If you want to restate the purpose?
Yes. So we need a, purpose for executive session is to discuss, for discussion of negotiations. Do we have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Carry. Okay.
This won't be long.